Together this year. And we'll be all the other plans for next year. Points reverse.
Okay. So that's where you're going to go.
Well, it's something about wellness.
Yeah, it's about wellness and food.
Right.
You can't fill gas, stuff like that.
Because those 130, I actually got 300 of them first. I had 130 and then 200 of them. So 400 to 130 of this now. And then 200 of them. Actually, I got 300 of them first. It cost me out of market 90 something. It's also pay sales tax.
I don't like that. Same kind of take your phone away. I think phones away.
Cell phones.
It's a lot of problems. Are you no longer, you just get a statement? Oh, I used to be. Yeah. Yeah.
And there's something along.
Happy.
But it's big money. I just have a cell phone that only acts as a pager.
I mean, you know. I used to have two. I always had one. I got two of them for one.
Who personally?
My personal one. Right. I think they're making all of these. So.
I have a cell phone, but it only texts. You can't log that.
Really?
Yeah, only texts.
Quite personally, well, I don't need to do that connection.
It's more for the phone to get a call. Because you still have pagers. Pagers, make up a nose and they pay. Because that's an obsolete number. You have a phone, so you hire up. You actually have a phone and you can talk. But lower levels.
Reminds for our job.
My daughter, by the reasons to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
Make the motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections, additions? On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes, we have two sets of minutes. One from October 19th and one from November 2nd. And October 19th, I heard you were asking, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes to regular meeting, October 19th, 2016, as written. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And for the November 2nd minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes to regular meeting on November 2nd, as written. Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
Stay.
Okay, correspondence. Got a couple of things here that I want to look at. Went over to DOT, not G. And started talking about the bridge and what we might do. And what we're looking for, Haddon, East Haddon, we'd like to see a walkway put on the side of it. It matters safety, convenience, and having access from one side to the other. Amongst the things that they suggested at that meeting were that they'd like to see a real commitment to the idea that we wanted to have that sort of connection between the towns. Now, from our side, it doesn't amount to much. We're going to put in a little 30-foot sidewalk. And the Haddon side is a whole lot more. They've got to come all the way down the hill with sidewalk. Should there be a walkway, it would have to be on the north side of the bridge. So they're going to have to get across probably the railroad track and then down. They're looking for a grant for it. And if you look in here, you'll see a letter from Liz Litten. And it's about town to Haddon. It's seeking a transportation alternative grant, about a million dollars, to design and construct sidewalks from the swing bridge all the way to the intersection of 154 and Tylerville. And they're talking about putting another roundabout like you see over in Salem for that. Feeling they have this that the intersection is dangerous and a roundabout is a safer way to do it. What we have, if you look at the next couple of pages there, Haddon came up, this is Liz Malardo, with a letter that they asked us if we would sign and send in endorsing their grant application to give a little bit of support. Problem was, they needed it by the intent, I believe, in order to do it. We couldn't do that. So I went ahead and I prepared a letter. You'll see that under my signature, not for the board of selectmen, but only for myself, supporting the whole thing. But what I think would be good to do, even though it's going to be late, is for us to endorse it with a letter from the board of selectmen. So what I propose to do and like to make a motion, that we send a letter basically as described here, endorsing the idea and give them a little bit of additional support. The DOT seems to be very positive about the whole idea, but they're very eager to see that it's endorsed and supported and that people are serious about it and willing to make a commitment to it. So having made that motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it?
Would that be part of the 2018 rehabilitation project?
That would be part of that project.
An extra weight to...
Well, the sidewalk would be in anticipation of that. So the sidewalks will be done regardless. And the walkway on the bridge would be part of that rehabilitation.
So we would connect sidewalk, that's in front of the little parking lot, and the generator for the bridge, that little part?
Down along the side of there. And be able to give people safety across the bridge. That is so dangerous. You think about it a moment, grocery stores on the other side, the Dunkin' Donuts on the other side, we've got the theater and everything on our side, we lack parking, they lack parking. Having that walkway across the bridge would tie the two towns together and just really enhance both towns enormously. So it's a terrific idea and we've got them interested. We wanted to argue as we can to get it going. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I've got a couple of other things that I'd like, well, in my report, we'll do this. I've got a couple of items. We went to the CCS, had a big gala event down at Foxwood, and a lot of presentations about what's going on, how to economically develop the town, some really good contacts there that I'm going to be following up on. But amongst the things that they presented in the second day, the comptroller, Kevin Limbo, came in. And I wanted to give you an idea what he had to say. He came in and he said, you know, we had a projected $50 million deficit to the state for next year. That's what we're looking at. And he said, however, we've just revised it and now it's a $99 million deficit to the state for next year. Well, yesterday morning, if you're listening to the news, the state came in indicating that the current year's deficit is now 1.3 billion. That started out with numbers like this. It may be an indication it was coming at us, that things are pretty bleak. On the other side, in a more positive sense, they had a presentation about what the recent election was going to do. What was the impact in Connecticut? And what did they see coming at us? And their conclusion at the end was a level level, is what they called it. They said, we're probably not going to get any more money, but given how the election turned out, it's likely that we won't get too much less either. So you look at both ways there, it's hard to tell just what's going to come at us now. But I think we're going to have a very challenging year in terms of putting a budget together. And the real issue for us is we proceed to create our budget. We do a nice job, hopefully in March we pass this. And after it's done, the state of Connecticut puts theirs together and announces what's going to happen. So we kind of have to guess as to where it's going to go and what we can do and what we can't do, how we're going to handle it. It's going to be a tough job this year because you really don't know. We're going to have to really watch what's going on with the state and what the projections look like as they go along. Anyway, that's my little bit on that. Citizens Concerns. Okay, I'm jumping ahead of myself there. First License Report, and getting into that with the Shared Services. I've got a number of things going on with that. Marked up here somewhere. Give you a little bit better report on it. Okay, Board of Ed, looking at a few things that are of particular interest. They've got a proposal for climbing wall in the school gymnasium. Monies are coming from consumers' union. That's going to be interesting for the kids. I know my son ended up choosing Cornell because they had the best climbing wall around. I suspect the kids are going to like that. That's in the elementary school. The Hailbrake School, they're working on a nature trail. They're being cleared with brush, signposts, picnic tables, all through the trail. Nothing special at Nathan Hale. District-wide Board of Education vehicles are now marked with a seal, so you're going to be able to identify a Board of Ed vehicle when it goes by. Transfer Station. We had the deck of the recycling bins replaced by a local contractor. That's been pretty ratty, a little bit dangerous. We felt that it needed to be done. And that same contractor had come in for a new roof on the Grange, which we need. And we said, you know what, let's see how he does on the recycling bins, what kind of a job he gives us. And his was the best bid on the Grange Hall roof. And he's going to be going ahead and doing that now. That should be taking off pretty quick. Heritage Park, up by the senior center. We're completing a study for design for what they call ballard lighting, that's lighting facing inward on the, I don't know if you call it the hiking running trail that we have going around it. And that is incredibly popular trail. People are on it all the time. The Annual Report, that's been completed, Board of Finance, and we're going to be moving that forward to a town meeting tonight. So that's what we got from Shared Services. Look at the major capital projects we've got going. The municipal facilities, the new office building we're working on, that's moving along very, very nicely. We're anticipating, if the weather permits, that we're going to start demolition of the portion that's going to be taken down in January. And we still have a projected hopeful date of sometime in November, perhaps early December, of actually moving into it. Downs has indicated that they can handle that, and they're going to make it happen.
Is the Board of Ed building for sale?
A Board of Ed building? The Board of Ed...
Is this one handled by...
Yes, that belongs to Ronnie Bernstein. We've been renting space in it for many, many years. In anticipation of us moving out, he's got it on the market. And he'd like to sell to us, but I'm not sure we're going to be the guys. And on the, you know, the new office there, what they determined is existing wells can't be used. We're going to have to replace the wells. That project is well underway. And the septic system, they took a look at it and there were septic tanks behind the building and to the southeast of the existing building. They determined that the ones to the southeast are not usable. We're not going to be able to do anything with them. But they also determined that because of the nature of the use as office space, we don't need them, that the existing septic system over in the parking lot behind the building is probably adequate. And it was also determined that the design of the building permitted us to draw the pipes back across the entire building very comfortably without too much trouble, so we could take full advantage of those. The initial concern was that, gee, how do you get the far corner of the building back to those tanks? And they checked into it, it looks like it's going to be okay. Elementary school renovation project, that's wrapping up very, very nicely now. We seem to have it just about done. Little bits and pieces here and there, but it's under budget, about $50,000, and was done in incredibly timely fashion. They started the school that out. They delayed the opening of the school by a few days at Labor Day and got the whole thing wrapped up. And if you really, if you haven't seen it, go down and take a look at it, it's spectacular. They've done a wonderful job. Our townwide radio project is moving along at last. If you go up Mount Penasus, you'll see where they've cast the base. It's a chunk of concrete you don't want to believe. It got delayed. They found enormous boulders in there. And the contractor, if the boulders are larger than a certain volume, gets an additional fee for breaking them up. And so the whole thing got delayed for a couple of weeks. Well, the state got up there and measured these boulders to determine that they were big enough so we could get a bonus for breaking them up. Put the project back a little bit. There was some concern because of the lateness of the season. And it's all worked out okay. They have a little repeater in place up there right now. When you get frequencies, and we gave our frequencies a number of years ago, it's a use or lose a proposition. What was happening is we've got extensions two or three times, so we had to get on the air. So what they do is they put a little box in there, and the little box actually broadcasts the frequencies we've got. It's like splitting those back in the 50s, just beep, 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 beep. Doesn't actually say anything, but we are on the air and we're going to hold our frequencies and we're not going to have any problem with them.
I want to tear our title again. Is there, is the front part that we have building in the back where the three footings are, is that the antenna portion? Or is the square, is the antenna that square part?
Well, the square part is the base, and those three hummocks that stick up.
In the back, yeah.
Those, I believe, from what I can see, are what actually becomes the antenna. And antenna all just morphs into one unit and off it goes. And I talked to them about cables, they said they don't use cables.
No guide wires and that stuff.
There's no guide wires, there's nothing like that. It's just a single monolith.
They sure did pour a lot of concrete in the base when I looked at it.
Think about it, it's up there like this. And in a windstorm, you'd like to have something to keep it from going over.
Are they removing any more trees around here? Because it would look like it would be pretty hidden once you have foliage on the trees.
It's going to be pretty good looking when it's done. To my knowledge, no more trees. My concern is that stone wall that somehow continued to stand despite what they did. And I asked them about that and they said, no, when we backfill, we're going to proceed to it that that stays in place. Stuff's going to come down. That's going to be pretty neat. In terms of the rest of the system, Buckley Hill, which is over towards Colchester, is seemingly coming back online and going to be available to us. That's going to complete a portion of the system. And one of our big concerns has been down along the river. How are we going to get a signal into that area from anything up here on top of the hill? And Haddon is putting in three towers, one in Tylerville, one up by Jaleel Road, and one by the firehouse. And it appears that we're going to be able to get onto those and use those, and those will backfeed just as we need. Put it right back, put them on the base. That's going to be really good.
So they're going to reactivate all that old equipment when you and myself and Ed went up to look at it, two years ago when I put...
No, 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 that's gone.
Was pretty, oh, that old equipment that we saw.
Yeah, that's gone.
Okay.
This is all going to be new stuff and up to date. That was pretty wretched when we looked at it.
Right.
And they're gone. They're out of business now. The last one is the firehouse renovation, and they have gone out for bid. We're expecting to have the bids back by December 1st. They're talking, and they didn't do a whole lot of good planning upfront. And they've got a lot of changes and a lot of rethinking of just what they're going to do with it. They understand very clearly that they got $508,000 and that's what they've got. They're going, whatever they're going to accomplish, you're going to accomplish it without that amount of money. And the second thing is, if you change it, you're coming back to a town meeting.
I was going to say, I thought we approved a 508 for someone.
We did. And we have made it very clear, you change it, you're coming back, you get a reapproval.
Okay.
And they wanted to fight it. Oh, well, it's just a little, no. You change it, you're coming back. We're going to take another look at it and decide whether or not we approve it. So I know I was a little surprised by some of the stuff I heard, saw, and then the rethinking they were doing. I think, you know, you should have been on board a little bit better upfront. Okay. Where are we at? Shannigan Road. Went down, took a look at Shannigan Road. We had EverSource down there with us. We walked all over it. And they were very, very a member to the idea of putting safety stones in position on all those platforms. When you go up on it, it's like the edge of the table here. You really can't see the edge. And I was very concerned with people being up there driving around, driving off the edge and running into real problems. And they agreed that they would put more stones and do some blocking so that it would all be quite safe. But at the same time, what we discovered was we had a major problem developing there. Any number of people were showing up and dumping their brush, their rubbish, their trash, their demolition from houses, shingles. And EverSource was real good about it. They've been picking it up and moving it off the property and saw it clean. And, but they said, you know what? I'm sorry?
Were they located?
Someplace appropriate.
Okay, so not...
It's not just being...
Next door.
No, 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 they're going to be to appropriate places. They said, you know what, we've got to block this. We can't have people with unlimited access. And so we did a block all the way up to Shannigan Road on the upper end of it and decided we'd end up putting a gate just below that last house on the road. And then we're going to put a gate down at Petticoat Lane. And it's going to be double padlocked because...
That goes through Petticoat Lane.
Spreckerup.
That goes through, they told me.
Shannigan goes all the way down to Petticoat Lane. And your car and my car would not do it. It's quite an interesting road. I mean, you can't even, you can't, I don't think there are very many cars that could do it, but it is a road. And one of the reasons we went all the way up was just in case somebody drove down and then had to back up and never be able to do it. But we are going to put a gate there. Jay Sprecker is probably not going to be very happy about it, but what we're going to do is double padlocks. He's going to have his padlock, they'll have their padlock, and each will be able to gain access.
Wait, so he's going to have to go through a gate to get to his house?
He has to go up Shannigan Road under the power lines to get onto his property, which is to the right of Shannigan Road. And he's concerned being able to have access to it. His is gated right now, but he's taking the issue with having gates on it, his, and the rest of it. So we're going to work that out with him. But it is going to be gated, and it's gated basically to keep the rubbish out of it because it's just such a mess.
Because I went up there on Saturday when I checked out the tower. So it's to the left side going down from Mount Penasus. And we're going up Mount Penasus, it's to the left, where they're doing all the construction. I went to the right past Gilley Resort and I didn't see anything. So everything what's happening must be on the other side.
Yeah, if you come down from Mount Penasus, you're never going to get to it, not with your car. It's about five hundred foot.
So where would you get it from?
Petticoat Lane.
Okay, that's why I didn't see it though.
If you come in from Petticoat Lane, and Shannigan Road cuts across the high tension wires, to the right is Jay Sprecker's land, to the left of Shannigan Road is town land. That's our land. And Jay has a road going into his, he's got a gate on it.
Is it your house? Is it your house? Okay, just land.
Just land. And what we're going to do is gate the road itself on both sides. And he's going to have, as I say, double padlocks, so his padlocks on it, he can open it, gain access to his property if he wants to. But it'll be safe and we're not going to involve the rubbish winding up on the property.
I was thinking on Saturday.
It makes sense that way. And, you know, I prefer to leave it open as long as it's safe, you know, and you have the blocking up on the landings. But, you know, that's not going to stop the trash from coming in. Apparently, we've got, one of the EverSource guys was down there, somebody pulls up with a load of rubbish that they're going to throw, and he looked at him and said, what are you up to? He says, what's it to you? He says, I've got your license plate and you on my camera right now. You've got no business putting stuff here. Get out of here. So the guy left. But it was that kind of an attitude that was going on there. I have no idea who or why.
Well, they have some other transfer station.
Costs money to get rid of stuff at the transfer station from time to time.
I don't know about that much.
It really is, it's really kind of sad, you think about it. But that's what we have to do. Okay, moving forward from any further on that?
Dumped the road.
Citizens Concerns.
The gates are going to be on the old Shannigan Road that itself, not going up into the woods underneath or something.
No, no, no.
Now, do the gates mean that, like, for instance, people on horseback can't go through?
There should be no issue with horseback.
Okay, so you're not forbidding people to use the road, just forbidding traffic from going into the road?
And the big thing is the trash that was being deposited up there, and we just had to stop that.
Yeah.
That's unacceptable.
Yeah, because we ride through there every once in a while.
Yeah, I know, and I looked at that and there are any number of ways around it.
It's not a problem. I just wondered if the intent was just to keep out vehicular traffic or everywhere.
Just vehic, and in particular, beyond motorcycles, dirt bikes are probably going to go through. They're not going to stop. But we just can't have people up there dumping trash. That's not going to work. Any other concerns? Yes?
A couple of months ago, with the scenic easement, we were told that we would get updates from Harvey Thomas or whoever, I guess Corey Brownell now goes to the meetings. And nothing's been updated in these meetings.
Campbell, what's his last name?
Campbell Hudson.
Yeah, Campbell Hudson. To my knowledge, nothing has been presented yet.
Well, that's not true. Because I have the notes here from the last two meetings. And they talked, it says they had a discussion, a lengthy discussion about what was going to be put on the building and into the easement itself. And then calls for...
I'm sorry, from who?
From the Connecticut River Gateway Commission.
Okay, Gateway is an advisory group.
I know, but you said that we were going to be updated here so we didn't have this sneak, something sneak up again. And there's been no updates, so...
And there's been nothing presented by the lawyer or by Tim Mellon?
He made a presentation in August and then again in September.
Yeah, I'm not...
That's what I'm, but this is what I'm saying, is we're going to run into the same problem because we're not being updated still. And it calls now, they're calling for baseball fields to be put down there?
That was something that he had suggested, that it would be a recreational area and that sort of thing might be possible. It sounds to me as if they're, I'm going to look at it, and I don't, I haven't, so I can't really comment on it.
All right, it says this, that the town asked for baseball fields.
I'm sorry?
It says in the notes here that the town, town representative asked for baseball fields.
We had discussed that, as part of the recreation, yes. And that sounds good to me. I'm optimistic, that's what we're looking for.
I thought that's what you presented at the last time you presented that.
Well, it wasn't anything as particular as a particular kind of...
Soccer fields, they have a soccer field and baseball field.
Yes.
At the last time you presented it.
I don't remember if I specified what it was, but okay.
Well, they said record.
Yeah, recreational type fields. I will go out, take a look at those and read them. That's very interesting, and I'm going to inquire about that. I'll give them a call and talk and find out what's going on.
Maybe they can make a presentation once in a while, like Shared Services or something?
I'm sorry?
Maybe someone could come in and let us know, like Shared Services, you get an update, what's going on with the easement until it's done?
The, it sounds to me, and it only sounds... The, it sounds to me, and it only sounds, that they're talking about what might be in the easement as they design it, rather than that any particular easement is in place or being suggested yet. I don't know, I gotta go look. Any other citizens' concerns? Yes, sir?
There is a question, I believe you said before that the plan is to pass the budget in March, is that what you said?
Well, ordinarily, we would pass it in March.
Well, I thought last year we passed it in April.
It gets passed to, to, it gets voted on in May.
Oh, so the referendum's in May?
Yeah. You put along for the town, you put the budget in place and you move it to town, public, whatever.
Yeah, public.
Public, and then it's processed, so the budget's usually done the end of March, and then-
But what does it mean to pass it?
Pass it on.
Oh, pass it on?
Pass it on to the next step. We usually done, always, to the back of the board, yes.
You know, the Board of Finance has established a budget, then it goes to town meeting, and it goes to referendum.
So it sounds like it's on the same schedule as it's-
It's on the regular schedule, that's what we're hoping for.
And I think, did you also say that we pass the budget in March, but then the state is, the state is not, we're not gonna know what we get from the state till after that?
I mean, last year's the perfect example. We had our budget in place, the state comes back and they chop, put it. It was a bunch of money, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
That's normal process when the state usually comes in after we're done.
And so it's a little unpredictable in terms of what's gonna happen. And we have to, to some extent, guess.
Well, I think, based on the numbers that you gave us earlier about the budget deficit, I think it's, it sounds to me like it's pretty sure there's gonna be changes coming down the pipe.
That is the case, but, you know, when they started talking about the impact of the changes in the Senate and the House, in terms of the House people now, he said, you know, he was more inclined to think that it would probably be pretty level. And that was the level of level. It wasn't gonna go up, but it wasn't gonna go down as much as it might have. So, you know, we're, we're gonna, you know, a bit of a cracher as we go forward.
Do we roughly know when, when we know what, how the state will treat us?
Some, so, sometimes, we roughly know, you know, they, they have, like, what's in the budget at the time. But if it's not voted on yet at the state level, then-
Only education, probably, approximately, which is the biggest chunk.
Right. If that changed afterwards.
Yeah, changed after, then there's the casino money back and, back and check.
I don't know if we get any of that anymore. But, so there are other little items that could affect it. But we know the ECS, ECS money is the biggest, we usually know, but like last year, they changed it. And then they gave us kind of, then they came back and actually they gave us more.
Isn't the same budget July 1st? Are they on, they're on, so that's why.
July 1st.
Yeah.
You okay?
Yes.
I think it depends, their budget, state budget, depends on whether they have a short session or a long session. Long sessions are their budget sessions, and that usually ends in May, short sessions are in June, I can't remember. So that's when you know, and if they, if they have to call them back because something happens, it could be changed July.
I, I think the message this year is that we've gotta be very careful, we really don't know where it's gonna end.
I think that's been the message every year for the last year.
And given this last election, who knows what the impact's gonna be, how it's gonna affect it. Certainly will be different. Okay, moving on, Shagmark Solar Project.
Just one more question?
Oh, I'm sorry?
I can't remember the name of the road right now, but we did a, we were supposed to do a paving job from, or a bank-
Rowland Hills you're speaking of.
Right, that's where the developer, that, it's complete?
That's totally complete.
And do we have a cost of what the final cost is, or?
It was the ninety thousand, I forget what the rest of it was, that was, has been depressed right along.
Okay, and are there other developments in the same, like, the town's gonna be in a position with other developments like this, or the roads?
Not that I'm aware of.
So it's been signed off, it's approved, it's a town road now, and?
That will come before town meeting to be accepted as a town road. It's not yet. It's a beautiful road, it's well done, it's well designed, we know it's right, no big reason not to accept it, but it will have to be accepted.
So it was paved earlier this month or last month?
I'm sorry?
It was paved earlier this month or last month?
No, actually, it was just finished, first party to November. They had other projects, as they were supposed to be. And the thing was that originally, the project was gonna go up in cost by five thousand dollars. But they said, because we had requested it in a timely fashion, there'd be no change in the price. So they held the price right through to the end.
It's done, because the bill isn't here.
Yeah. I, I signed it, and you've signed it now. So it is, it is done.
One more thing, if I could, are there any further developments on the paramedic service?
Nothing further, at this point.
Still in discussion?
Yeah, it's, it is what it is for the moment. COG is looking at it, they've got people, I'm not on the committee, just looking at it. We're gonna be discussing that at great length. Where do we go from here, how do we handle this? And that's, that's a problem. Cause this year was nine thousand, next year is eighteen thousand, that's gonna be in this proposal for this budget. Eighteen is still probably within bounds, but the next year is twenty seven, and we're starting to, that's starting to get sticky.
So are you working COG, you're on COG?
I'm in, I'm in COG, yes.
And, so, have they given a update?
I don't know. And there should be a meeting coming up in a couple of-
So you'll get a update?
Oh, yeah. When that comes up, I'll certainly be all over it. It's a big deal. Okay, any other? Okay. Shagmark Solar Project, nothing new to report on that. They remain balls in their court. They have a June 10th deadline to produce the power given to us. If they don't, then there'll be a recourse at that point. But they do have until June 10th to use power and supply to us. Okay. I'm gonna pass a quick piece of something here.
No, no, I have to call for the town meeting.
Yeah. Okay, I'll read it off the air. Make a motion to approve the following call for town meeting. The electors and citizens of the town of East Halem, Connecticut, qualified to vote at town meeting, are hereby warned and notified that the annual town meeting will be held in the town, town meeting hall on Town Street in the said town of East Halem at eight P M. Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, for the following purposes, the list. Item one, to consider an act upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to enter into all necessary agreements with the Transportation Commissioner of the State of Connecticut for the receipt of state aid for town highways in accordance with the general statutes of Connecticut. Item two, to continue to accept the annual town report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, two thousand sixteen. Item three, to consider an act upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to accept a gift in the amount of eight thousand dollars from Consumers Union of the United States Inc. for the purpose of lighting at the Heritage Park walking trail. Revenue account three three zero five zero four three zero 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 G one six zero one. And expense account three zero five five zero one one five eight eight two O G one six zero one. You second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
We got the annual comment for it?
We gotta draft a, a while ago.
You got it in, you got it in our item packet, you got to draft it. It's not up to you to approve it, it's a fourth one.
I know, but-
You gotta be more-
For moving it forward, I'd like to see it, is it in my packet back there?
Yeah, you gotta be on our client's packet, they don't take that out.
I did that.
Any further discussion?
No, I, I, I looked at the draft, it was, it was so long, I think it would be done at that point, so it's gonna bite, bite it up.
Okay, on favor? Aye. Excuse me. Gonna make a motion to recommend, recommend the adoption of the following resolution. Resolve the town of East Halem, enter into, with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems necessary to, or appropriate to, and further resolve that M.J. Lyman as First Selectman of the town of East Halem is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of East Halem to do and perform all acts and things which it deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing, delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. This is basically to get a grant on behalf of Homeland Security, we do it every year. And we don't actually get it, we simply get it and it gets turned over to the Homeland Security. It's a federal grant, so we have to do it. And, you second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So this is a grant, but do you mean with the Board of Minutes, is there match, is there all?
No, 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 this is, the money actually goes to the emergency management, the state. But we have to, it's given to each town, and then they all turn it over. So it doesn't come to us, and there's no matching or anything, we do this every year. Okay? On favor?
Aye.
Worked commission committee changes, we have none this time around. Tax refunds. Motion to award tax refunds in the amount as presented, four hundred and fifty-three dollars, sixty cents Nissan Infinity LT, one eighty-nine, seventy-two to Joseph Broder, one eighty-nine and seventy-two cents. That's the extent of it. You second on that? And any discussion on it? Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Once again, public comment, any further questions?
Question regarding to the proposed lighting of Heritage Park, is this gonna be solar light, solar powered?
Solar powered, and it's gonna be arranged such that it is on the outside of the track and broadcasts in. It's not gonna completely illuminate it, it's basically gonna give you probably a half of it, with some level of reasonable illumination. You'll be going from light to light, and people are running out there right now saying there's no issue, but it'd be nice to have a little more light along the way. It'll make it far more attractive, a little safer, a little more comfortable for people to be out there. And as I said before, we've got people out there every hour of the day. You go by, there's always a car, maybe two or three cars. I had occasion to go over to the senior center this afternoon. I drove by, I looked over, it was my daughter charging around it, having a grand time.
I think it's fine, I'm just concerned with my, probably, my actual-
Now, we're not gonna try to run wires out there, it's strictly so. Any other? Don't.
Did we cover number seven on the agenda?
I think we did.
We did.
Yes, we did. I indicated that there's nothing new.
Nothing, okay.
And that they are still on, online to be providing power by June 10th, two thousand seventeen. Hopefully, we'll do that. Okay, any other public comment? Yes?
What is the feeling with the, with the way things are going now, with the board about buying more open space? Or, like you said, if the airport became available, buying that land, what's your feeling, buying more open space?
I don't think we could even speculate. The town doesn't have a great deal of money, we're afford about all we can afford. I can't speak for anyone except myself. My feeling is, I like open space, I don't think we can afford a lot more. If someone were to make it so attractive or so special, that it'd be very hard to say no.
We don't, we don't have enough open space, we don't have.
Probably a million, with about that.
Yeah, but it's, it's, even beyond that, it's the overall cost of it, I just, it's gonna have to be very attractive and very interesting, very special, before I'm gonna become real interested.
And then, with the new budget season, you're gonna get started earlier due to the situation, you said? Are you gonna start your discussions, like, in the next, probably after the holidays, or is it?
Meaning terms of the new budget, the upcoming budget? That's actually, we're trying to move into that early as we can, and so we'll have more time for it and be a little ahead of ourselves. It's always a difficult process. If we can get started earlier, it's gonna be easier to do.
And I just want to, you said the meeting's gonna be on Saturday, so it's easier to?
Those seem to work better, they're more convenient for people. And I prefer for them to do that, but, but once again, we're gonna have to see how the schedule works out. That, that depends on what happens. Anything else? Any other? Okay. Selectment discussion, any, any you'd like to add, Sue or Ernie? Nope. My goodness. One thing we do have, we all have a calendar in there to take a look at. And I believe we did that last month. And to my mind, it looks pretty good. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the dates as listed on the pro schedule. And, you know, we always have the option to cancel a meeting or adjust it if we need to, as we all want. You second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Don't you usually go away in January?
Yeah, actually, it'd be in February 1st, would be the one.
Okay, cause I am, I'm away January, I think, the fifteenth.
Okay, so we, we can still meet in spite of that.
Yeah, I know, I know, for October, if I have another vacation, we don't-
So the eighteenth, for the eighteenth, I'm sorry. I won't be here for the eighteenth, but-
Of January.
Of January, just making sure that's one of them.
I think we should seriously consider either another date or canceling the July 5th one.
Definitely.
The day after Fourth of July, maybe we should set a date out or, or cancel it.
I say we just cancel it, because it's the summer.
Yeah.
That is not meeting, usually, that's fine, that's fine.
You both like to pass with that?
Yeah, I, I can cancel it.
I, I'm in favor of that, I can't imagine that we're gonna be here either.
We can always set up a special meeting if we, if we have, so.
High tension's a little bit slow. Okay. All in favor is amended?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, anything else?
Now, what are we gonna set for the budget meeting?
Not here, not now.
Come out, and please, the section one.
I'm sorry?
What are we setting up? What are we gonna have?
We've seen a proposed schedule, all right?
All right, when, when are you going away?
I'm going away, um, the sixteenth to the twenty-third, or something.
On February?
January.
January?
And I'm-
So you're both here February, cause that's when your meetings are, is in February? But the schedule is December 5th to the departments to, to complete. And then they have until January to determine. Then Cindy does her thing to put it together, and you guys gather at the beginning of February, so, to start working on your budget. So you usually do either three, four, or five evenings, or last year you did one Saturday and one Tuesday evening to catch people. So I'd be looking to do that sometime mid, mid-February, for, for one of those Saturdays.
Yeah, back on the fourth, the fourth, so, so the eleventh, the eighteenth, twenty-fifth.
Right, cause then the first meeting in March is when you have the every motion already done by, to turn the, the budget over to, off the Board of Finance.
Actually, that's the fourth, I, I look at March, actually, the fourth, February 4th, so the eleventh, the eighteenth, twenty-fifth.
Yeah, so that's, well, we'll probably look at, like, the eleventh to the eighteenth, would be my assumption of February. So the Saturday and the Friday. So the Saturday, I'm picking either the Tuesday.
No, that's, am I wrong here?
I don't know, I have a calendar.
I know.
The, the, for 11th, 18th, 25th is the, you're in 2016?
Yeah. Okay, those are for Saturdays, you're like, yeah, okay.
Right, so that's on the Thursday. A Saturday, and then a Tuesday, and then, it all depends on the budgets that get turned in, because if there's a lot that, that are necessary to be seen, you know, that have a lot of changes, you might wanna see more people, you might require more days, so, between, see those, but that's a rough timeframe.
So the same timeframe as last year?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's not things earlier, so, okay.
Okay.
January's gonna, gonna be over.
Okay.
All in favor now?
Oh. Okay.
Okay, one, one other item, just be aware that the, uh, there's gonna be an East Haddon Public Schools Community Budget Forum. Now, this is, the schools are doing this for their budget. Wednesday, November 30th, till seven PM. So they're inviting everyone to come to the, uh, Neil Ray High School Auditorium. They take a wish for the paper out for schools and school budgets, see how they're working out, see what's gonna happen.
What is this?
This is a fundraiser by the high school, you can buy a mattress at a bit of a discount, that, actually, it's just loose on the table. That's not part of what we're doing here.
Oh, okay.
Once you want it to be.
Yeah, they signed it on top of.
Yeah, I've seen it on top and I'm like.
What are they doing? Somebody has offered them the opportunity to sell mattresses, get a commission on it, you know, for the school. And, uh, there it is. And you get a bit of a discount, I think it's fifty dollars on the mattress on top of it, so, not a bad deal. Okay, uh, that being done, uh, make a motion to adjourn. And all in favor?
Aye.
Seven fifteen.